Okay. All right, the presentation format then tonight is a 45-minute period where everyone should have received prepared questions and we'll rotate through the question sequencing, starting with a different person each questioning round and allow a minute and a half, I believe it is. Mike is going to be the scorekeeper and keep everybody on pace.
Those scores.
Yep, timer, exactly, right. The timer. Well, keeping score of the minutes or the seconds, but at any rate, Mike's going to be the timer and will alert people whenever their time is near so that we can move on. And we'll try to step through the process in a format that allows enough time for all those responses. And then, once we conclude all of the prepared questions, then there will be an open period of time for additional questioning. And then, at the end of that, closing remarks. So, without any further ado, unless I've missed anything, Diana, Mike, in terms of the format, I think we can probably go ahead and get started. The only other thing is that there's access to a mail dot admin at finksburg.org, or for anybody that is joining us either now or later and has a question they'd like to pose, they can ask that question and send it in. Mike will screen it and then we'll go ahead and present that question to the candidates. So, I might be talking to myself here. It says, "My network bandwidth is low."
We can still hear you, Skip.
You can? Okay, I just showed off my video to see if that might help. I'm still getting, still getting my network bandwidth is low.
You sound fine.
Well, if you can hear me, okay, all right, then if you can hear me, let's go ahead and get started. And I arranged this in a very sophisticated manner of alphabetical. So, Stephanie, you have the first question of, tell us about yourself, including why you believe you're qualified to serve as a BOE member.
Sure. So, first, I'd like to thank Skip and the Finksburg Planning and Citizens Council for holding this tonight. I really appreciate it. I am probably the newcomer in this race. Donna and Marcia, obviously, already on the Board of Education, and Virginia having served previously. But I'll give you my background. So, I've been volunteering in Carroll County Public Schools for the last several years because I have a 13-year-old daughter and a nine-year-old son. I've served on our PTA boards. I have served on the board-appointed Community Advisory Council, where I'm currently the chair. I've also served on the board-appointed Security Advisory Council. In my, what I call my real life, I'm a project manager for a Maryland-based financial firm. So, I've been working there for 16 years. I've handled corporate retirement plans. I've managed other folks who handle those retirement plans. And most recently, I've moved into a project management role where I'm managing legal and regulatory projects, so making sure that everything's on the up and up with all of the different items that have been happening with COVID, so CARES Act, Secure Act, those types of things for the retirement plan industry. I'm also the president of my homeowners association, so all the fun things that I do on the side. And my kids are very active in sports. So, my daughter's been playing volleyball for a few years now, and my son's been playing baseball for a few years now. So, travel tournaments and things of that nature that have helped put me in touch with people in the community.
Very good, very good. That's broad basis of activity. Stephanie, anything, do anything more to add?
No, I'm good.
Okay, very good. Then Marcia?
Thank you.
Same question?
Okay, thank you. Good evening. First of all, again, I need to thank Skip and the FPAC for hosting this forum. It definitely has been very challenging this year to run a campaign. I am Marcia Herbert. I am Vice President of the Carroll County Board of Education, and this is my second year in that position. Lifelong resident of Carroll County. I taught school in this county for over 40 years. I also coached varsity sports, department chair, student class advisor, and many other committees. I am currently on the State Legislative Committee for May. I am also Ambassador to 11 schools. I am also on the Special Ed Citizens Advisory Committee, along with the Security Committee. I also own Country Hill Farm. It's a 40-acre horse farm where we provide students with riding lessons, leases, and horse shows. And I've been around for a while. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Donna?
Hey, thanks, everyone, and thanks to Skip and the FPAC for putting on this forum. To tell you a little bit about myself, I am Donna Stavigny. First and foremost, my family includes my wonderful husband Jay of 28 years, and my two kids. Grace is 14 and in ninth grade, and Evan is 12 and in seventh grade. We live in Finksburg, and we've been active residents of the Carroll County community for over 20 years. And since my kids are currently in the school system, I have a very vested interest in making sure they get a high-quality education. I've served on the Carroll County Board of Education for almost four years now, one as Vice President and two as President. So, to answer the part about being qualified to serve on the BOE, I don't think that just being on the BOE makes you qualified. I think driving change and getting results is what makes a candidate uniquely qualified. And I believe my collaborative leadership style and vision is what differentiates me from many candidates. I've developed strong relationships with our key stakeholders that we need to support CCPS. It's the commissioners, our state delegates, our local mayors, local law enforcement, and quite recently, our local health department. We've been spending quite a bit of time with them. I'm also, in my real life, as Ms. Brooks said, was, I am an actuary. I work for a large reinsurance company, and I'm a recognized business leader. So, I bring a proven track record of strategic and financial problem-solving experience to the table. So, and I have strong communication skills, and I plan to continue to have a passionate and active voice in advocating for our teachers and our students.
Time is up.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Donna. Okay, the second question then, and we'll begin with, Virginia's still not here with us tonight? Doesn't look like it. Okay, then we'll begin with Marcia. But the question is, due to COVID-19, what is your plan or recommendation for in-person instruction for the remainder of 2020, leading into 2021?
Well, currently, the board has agreed on October 19th to implement our hybrid schedule. Of course, we will be working closely with Ed Singer, as Donna stated, Carroll County Health Officer, to help us with our final decision on opening. But we have set that as our date. The board has leading indicators for the opening. These metric indicators include the weekly rate of COVID-19 community cases per 100,000, which is the most important benchmark metric that we have. We also have other guidelines. Number one, we have the State of Maryland and John Hopkins University positivity rate. And then, we also have the weekly rate of community COVID-19 deaths. And then, the third thing we're looking at are the number of occupied ICU beds in Carroll Hospital Center. We really cannot open fully until the governor opens up his Phase III more. I really do believe, right now, there'll be a combination of virtual and hybrid for a while, because we must continue to watch the numbers carefully and follow through with any incidences. I do know Dr. Lockhart has also asked the State Education Department for permission to go virtually on snow days, which that is a positive. But we're also still waiting for an answer on that. But I will tell you, there is no, nothing better than to have a teacher in a classroom face-to-face with their students. But as, we will have to wait with guidance from our health officer.
Okay, very good. Then Donna? Okay, Donna, same question?
Time for me? Okay. First, let me say it's my strong belief that in-person instruction is the best model, especially for special needs and our elementary students. So, our board wanted to get students back in person as quickly as possible, but only when it was safe to do that for both students and staff. So, up until recently, the state hadn't provided any guidance on what the COVID metrics should look like for schools to reopen. So, I did a lot of research and worked closely with our local health department to develop metrics that could help us make that difficult decision. And as a result, our board developed those metrics and voted to reopen hybrid with a target date of October 19th. We did that without any state guidance, and I believe that demonstrates strong and effective local leadership. We started the year with small groups for special ed and career in tech. We handed out laptops to over 10,000 of our students, and we worked through connectivity issues throughout the county. We've ordered laptops for every high school student, and they should arrive soon. And as long as the metrics continue in the right direction, the plan is to reopen hybrid on October 19th, with the intent to transition to a full return to schools as soon as the state mandates allow it, and our local metrics show that it's safe. But a couple of final points, we can't eliminate all risk. We, as a country and a community, need to learn to live with and adapt to a COVID world. We need to wear our masks. We need to wash our hands, stay socially distanced, and we need to recognize that COVID cases can and will occur. So, we need to quarantine, contact trace, do all the right things to prevent the spread. It's not going to be easy, but I believe it's what we need to do to get back to educating our kids in the best possible way. Thank you. Is Skip still there?
I think we might have lost Skip.
Okay, very good. Stephanie, just a quick comment before I ask you to respond. I'm getting another signal about my weak, yeah, my weak signal and the network bandwidth is low. So, if I should happen to lose my connection. Hello? Anybody hear me?
We can. Yes, we do.
I was just saying, I'm having some difficulties hearing and I think communicating. So, if I drop off for some reason, then please.
And in that moment, that's when he drops off.
Okay. Where are we at? Was that the second question?
Yes, that's it. Question number two, and I'm up.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, great. So, the question was, due to COVID-19, what are your plans for or recommendations for opening in-person instruction this year, leading into 2021? I really appreciate the hybrid model that the Board of Education has come up with. I do have some other ideas that I would love to be able to see, looked at, you know, as a recommendation, which would be, you know, do we have the ability to take some schools, maybe not all schools, but some schools where we know we have underserved students, and, you know, come up with class sizes that are maybe 10 students per class, and have those students be able to attend five days a week, so that we're not doing two days in, three days out, knowing, you know, can we get the rest of the population to say that they want to stay virtual, so that these students can have the opportunity to be in the classroom? I've talked to a lot of folks about that. You know, there are a lot of folks who are saying like, "Yeah, I still want to keep my kids home virtually." You know, I'm fine with that for a period of time. There are other people who are like, "I really need my child to be in school." You know, they're happy with two days a week, but they'd be happier with five days a week. So, could we potentially look at having a pilot school where we can get some consensus to have essentially half of the students stay virtual until we can open up all the way, and then the other half of the students be able to be in the building five days a week?
Okay. All right, so we still don't have Virginia Harrison. Is that correct?
We do have Virginia. I think I see we do.
Is that Shorty's iPhone?
Yes, I can't hear you.
Oh.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Virginia, we do hear you.
I can't hear you.
We've lost her.
There she is. She's still there.
Hello? Anybody hear me?
Yeah, hi, Skip. We have Virginia.
Virginia, do you have a volume turn?
Hi, Virginia. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
But I can't hear you. I can barely hear you.
Can you turn your volume up on your phone?
I've turned it up as far as it could go.
Okay. Well, we can hear you well. If you would like to answer the second question.
As far as it goes.
If you would like to answer the second question, we can hear you.
I'm sorry?
If you would like to answer the second question, we can hear you.
You said question?
Answer the question number two.
Number two?
It's actually letter B.
Okay, due to the COVID-19, what is my plan or recommendation? I was really very concerned about the students, and I know it's the best thing for them to be in front of a classroom, but I'm so concerned about what's going to happen with COVID. I was very happy to see that we started staying home. But I think we should be very careful with the flu coming up, flu season coming up. I'm very concerned, but I do have the faith in the school system that they would gradually go into it. To me, the most important thing is to keep the student safe and healthy. But I have the utmost confidence in Carroll County Public School, and I know that they have been working very hard to try to get things started.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Very good. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Skip, go ahead.
Yes, we can hear you, Virginia. Thank you very much for.
And my recommend, now that things, we're looking for things to get better, and I'm looking forward to the kids going back to school and hoping that everything works out well.
Okay, let's keep going. Skip, I'll take over from here.
Hello?
Our next question is, what is?
Very good. Thank you, Virginia. Can everybody hear me again?
Yes.
Okay. Virginia, thank you for joining us tonight. I think we're ready to go in bits and pieces here, and I apologize for my connection. If you lose me, please just continue. Everyone should have the outline of what the questions are. But I think we're ready for question C.
Correct.
And we'll start with, we'll try to get back in sequence here. Virginia, if you could answer question C, which is, what is your position on virtual teaching, and how can you measure teaching and learning effectiveness?
I can't hear.
Hello?
Virginia's having trouble hearing us.
Anybody there?
Yes.
We're here. Can you hear us, Virginia?
Yes, I can barely hear you.
Okay, we're on question C.
I had a great difficult time trying to get in. I started at 20 up, and we tried every device we had just to get in. I apologize for that.
Virginia, we're on question C. If you have the questions before you.
What did you say? We're on C?
Yes, question C.
I can't hear anything now.
Okay, well, let's come back to Virginia and.
I beg your pardon?
Would you like me to go, Skip?
Yeah, please, Donna. Let's start with you, and we'll come back to Virginia then.
Okay. Would you mind repeating the question?
Certainly. It's question C. What is your position on virtual teaching, and how can you measure teaching and learning effectiveness?
Okay, thanks. So, first, let me say that our educators are doing an absolutely fantastic job with the virtual environment. Our virtual teaching is great, but virtual learning is still tough for many of our students. So, my opinion on virtual teaching is that it certainly has a place moving forward. As a school system, where we were in the spring and where we are now is night and day. So, I can envision using the virtual platform to eliminate the things for need, like snow days. You know, we won't need those in the future. We can also provide equitable access to programs around the county, and we can give enhanced curriculum for GT and advanced academics. And while we're in the hybrid model, virtual will remain an essential component. One of the benefits to opening virtual in September is that it required us to lay a strong foundation for the hybrid model and future uses. With regard to measuring effectiveness, I truly believe that which gets measured gets done. It's the most important tenet of our strategic plan. And ultimately, we need to rely on our typical student achievement benchmarks at the state and local levels, like the MCAPs, which are PARC, CBAs, and SRIs. Those will remain our primary tools to measure effectiveness, whether it's remote or in person. And as soon as we get back into the classrooms with the hybrid, we'll begin administering the local assessments and comparing them to last year's results, to determine how much learning has been lost and where we need to focus our recovery plans. We will catch our students up and will continue to advance. So, I believe that virtual does have a place in the 21st century of education, but I'm firmly committed to the in-person model as the gold standard. Thank you.
See, and it's.
Very good. Thank you, Donna. Stephanie, same question?
Thank you.
Question C on the format?
So, I am a huge advocate for virtual learning for many reasons. One, I think that, starting off this school year, I thought, we started off strong, right? I have two kids who are in Carroll County Public Schools, and my experiences with them have been fantastic. And that's due to the teachers. They have fantastic teachers. What I would like to see is an enhanced virtual learning platform that can be leveraged ongoing, especially for children who may need to be out of school. So, I give an example. I have a friend who lives in Shrewsbury, Pennsylvania. They have virtual learning and have had virtual learning for years. It is not homeschooling. It is not something that you sign up through a homeschool association for. It is part of their local jurisdiction's public school system. Her son has ADHD. He works better in an environment at home where he has less distractions. He's been doing this for three years now, and he's succeeding very well in a virtual learning environment. So, I think that that's something that we need to take into consideration for the children in Carroll County. Is there the possibility that we could have a virtual learning platform so that students who may need to be home for one reason or another, it could be, you know, a knee surgery where they need to be out of school for eight weeks? You know, what can we do to help them? I think the virtual platform is a fantastic idea for that. I also want to support in-person learning. There are some students who are going to learn better in person, and we know that. We know that because we hear that from the families that are struggling now with virtual, right? Virtual isn't for everybody, but in-person isn't for everybody either.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Marcia?
Thank you. Again, I want to make sure. Can you hear me? Okay, thanks, Donna. I see your head nodding. I just want to make sure it's clear that there is no replacement for a teacher in a classroom face-to-face, but we must be safe. CCPS, we were first out of the box for virtual in the spring. I was very proud of them, and all that hard work those teachers did, and I still thank them every day for that. But there was need for improvement. But over the summer, they did thousands and thousands of hours of online learning for our virtual services this fall. Educators, they went above and beyond. They worked collaboratively. They thought out of the box to make this a big success this fall, and it really has. It has been very organized. They stepped up to the plate. Everyone has their classes, and it is really started out well this fall. But when we talk about effectiveness of learning and how to measure it, number one, our principals are in charge of our teachers' teaching, and they have the ability to go into every classroom and evaluate these teachers and help them along the way with this virtual concept, which is absolutely new. The other thing is, as we all know, we did not do state testing in the spring because of COVID. That will be coming back, and then we will see the real effects of that.
Was that the timer, or what was that? That was the timer.
Oh.
No emergency.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Marcia. Virginia, are you still connected with us? Okay, very good. Then the same question, question C.
Virginia, you need to unmute. Can you unmute your phone?
Virginia, you're muted.
I can't unmute her. I'm sorry.
Virginia, we can't hear you because you're on mute.
Is that better?
Yeah. Now you're back on.
Okay.
Good.
When school first closed last March, and they started to teach virtual, I was really happy that they could do that, because that meant that while the kids were home, they were still getting their education and still being involved and not missing as much as they would have. So, I was very excited about that. And when it started again in September with the pandemic, I was happy to hear that, too. And then, and all the things we're hearing about COVID-19, it's very worrisome. And but I have a grandson who was home, and he has an issue, and it was very good, and it was very successful for him. And that tells me that we're trying to reach every child and educate every child. But I think we've learned a great lesson about some of the things we are doing and some of the things we need to do in the future. And I think with, they've learned a lot about equity. they've learned a lot about equity and education. And I have a lot of faith in Carroll County Public School with teaching and learning. And I know they have, when there's an issue, we get committees together and we work each and every child. And we have the support of some of our neighbors such as the board.
Skip, are you there? Well, let's move on to question D. And our first.
Okay, Virginia, thank you very much for that. We'll move on to question D now and Donna, you'll lead off on this one if you would, please. Beyond COVID-19, what is the biggest challenge facing Carroll County Public Schools?
So I believe the we can hear you. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and go.
Yes.
Okay, so unfortunately, I believe the effects of COVID are gonna linger a lot longer than many of us care to see. And while we are opening this month, we're still a ways off from getting all of our kids back in the schools and back to some sense of normal. So for me, the biggest challenge beyond COVID is gonna be to assess where our students are from an academic standpoint and then develop recovery plans to get them back up to the appropriate level, both instructionally and socially, emotionally. This will need to be done at the individual student level and it'll be the key to address the formal plans that we can execute and monitor for our kids. After that, another key challenge is gonna be managing the financial impact from the shutdown. With tax revenues down, enrollment down, state funding unknown, the budget process in 2021 is going to require a very skilled hand to make sure that we put CCPS in the best possible position for success. A solid relationship and communication with the commissioners and our state delegates is going to be very important. Beyond that, we'll need to continue executing on the metrics that we've outlined in our strategic plan and strive for continuous improvement as we go. Thank you.
So Marcia, if you would, take on question D. Do you have a question?
Okay, I think our biggest challenges are gonna be the inequities that we've had, the disadvantage for the laptops, internet accessibility, special education, special needs, not receiving services, and inequity with the career in tech, not receiving hands-on classwork, and the definite need for social emotional services. This is all gonna be catch-up for us the entire year and probably years after. You know, we went out and bought thousands of laptops and got them out. They went and bought hotspots to help them out and even come into school locations. And we did open up the career in tech on September 14th to certain areas such as heavy equipment, carpentry, masonry, those type of applied mechanical engineering. And then we are gonna continue to open that up more, but they've got to continue to make up these hours. The second phase will be October 5th for the career in tech. And then the final phase will be October 22nd, but these students will have to continue to make up what they have missed. Then we have got to go to special ed. We have been working with small groups, getting them in, starting and we're gonna get ready. We've had small groups and we're gonna continue to get small groups in. And we will add to that. With the special ed, we are bringing in the autism program, the BEST program, the Carroll Springs, and then we're also gonna start with the prep program. And these are all things that students need services and we gotta catch up. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephanie?
Sure.
Question D.
Moving beyond COVID-19 and the repercussions of that, I think that there are three really big things that we need to be able to focus on. The first one being diversity and inclusion. You know, how many of our students go to school and think that they don't have anybody to relate to who's a teacher? And it spans, when I say diversity and inclusion, I mean everything. My children's elementary school, and we've been in this elementary school now for what seems like forever, has two male teachers and those are the gym teachers. That's it. You know, my daughter went to middle school and had a male health teacher and was like, whoa. And I was like, yeah. And then she had a male social studies teacher and she was taken aback by that because by the time children reach middle school, they're already making their own decisions about gender biases, right? They're already thinking, all of my teachers are women. You know, you introduce a male teacher, you know, it's a little bit of adjusting. Then you have things like race, religion. Who's out there that's like me that I can connect with? Because students will think that there's nobody who understands them at the school. So I think that that's something that we need to work on. I also think that mental health education really needs to be looked at more closely. I think that this year, given the COVID, you know, crisis here, we've done a lot better with looking at mental health. I'm seeing teachers who are saying, you know, let's be patient, let's, you know, be flexible, let's learn. This is something that I think we need to be teaching children at a very young age. Nothing is perfect and a lot of children don't have coping mechanisms to deal with things that aren't in their set schedule. So when things change, they don't necessarily know how to handle it. Was that time?
Yes, that was.
Thank you.
And Virginia, question D. Do you have a question?
I would I would say the greatest challenge we face is how to how do we continue to improve opportunities for all the students? One thing that's happened with the pandemic and what it has done in Carroll County and nationwide is to expose the equity gap that exists, whether it was wealth, race, student or disability. We need to do all we can do to help make sure that we have a high expectation for all of the kids. And we need to overcome the liking of resources and also exposing our own faculty and have more professional development and building our existing success to present our learning opportunities for all of the kids. And being advocates for students in need to encourage and push them into more advanced classes and opportunity and exposing and expanding the use of technology in a meaningful way to enhance student learning and improvement across this access, improving access for all students and promoting a culture of acceptance and tolerance for all students and employees.
Thank you. We'll move to question E, which is, what do you see are the priorities now and for the current and future school budgets? And if we could start with Marcia.
All right. Wow, this is a big one. First of all, before we even think about budgets, is we're gonna have to see what our enrollment is. And that date is September 30th and that's the date that we give the state of Maryland our enrollment figures. And we, as in Carroll County, will save a little more over $5,000 a person for those students. And then, besides that, then we've got to see what also the county will provide. But last year, if you all remember, Dr. Lockard did four community sessions in the evenings with the chiefs, supervisors, educators, Board of Education people and school counselors. And he went around and asked every group what were some of the things that we needed to work on. And I talked to everyone about special education and the dire need for more special education educators. We were very fortunate this year in the spring to be able to add six to that. That list still remains and we still need to continue to work on that list for this year. But who knows, we have a five-year budget prepared. But with the way things are with the state and the county, we will have to see what monies there are available and to see if we can continue on that wish list. But we did not include COVID in our budget, any weight, shape, size. So that's what we've got to do with this budget. We need to continue on with Dr. Lockard's list that we had and continue on.
Thank you. Stephanie, would you take that on next?
So I think for the current budget, obviously, as Marcia said, we did not plan for COVID. Nobody planned for COVID. So I think that we're gonna have to go back. There's gonna have to be a look at what our technology spend was. We know that there was an increase in buying devices and doing things to help our students so that they would be able to be successful in virtual learning. We're gonna have to marry that up with what was our budget? Were we able to make cuts? Are we able to keep a balanced budget? And if not, what happens then? Looking to the future and whatever our new normal is going to look like, I think we need to look at supporting our students and teachers. For me, that includes the addition of guidance counselors in schools. So as an example, in an elementary school, you have one guidance counselor who could be dealing with between 600 and 700 students. That guidance counselor is also expected to do classroom lessons for every classroom. When the guidance counselor is doing that and a student needs help, that student has to wait. And a lot of people think, well, these are elementary school kids, you know, they shouldn't have any problems. They should be kids. They should be having fun. But unfortunately, we know that there are students who are going through rough times. It could be something that's happening at home. It could be the loss of a grandparent. You know, sometimes they just need somebody to talk to. And if our guidance counselors are constantly in the classrooms, then those kids aren't getting the support they really need. So I would say that getting at least one additional guidance counselor in every elementary school for me would be a top priority. The other thing that I hear a lot of is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Virginia, would you talk to question E, please?
Okay. The long-term impact of the pandemic is gonna make it kind of difficult for the budget. I know every year we get a budget and we were very lucky this year because we got money for the pandemic. And but next year, I'm very concerned because of the number of things we never had to do before. We'll have to make sure that we get plenty of the cleaning supplies, extra cleaning supplies and hand sterilizer and making sure that we're gonna have to come up with some new programs so that our students can get some extra help to catch up. So I think it's gonna be pretty difficult because we also are giving our teachers a little more money in their raises. So we're gonna have to really trim back the budget maybe a little bit and so that we can do so that the money can give our students opportunities to sort of catch up and to help. And we have new buildings going up and it's gonna be very difficult, I think, with the budget because it's a number of things we never had to do before. We have to do just to maintain our sanity and keep our building healthy and clean. And also, I think we're gonna have to have a lot more tutors than we had before.
And I'm sorry, your time is expired. So Donna, question E, please.
I think the budget may actually be the second biggest challenge next year after getting our kids back on track academically. We're definitely gonna have to deal with the ramifications of COVID and the impacts that that's had on our budget. But also, we're gonna need to provide extra services to our kids, interventions, additional school psychs and counselors, absolutely. I think the capital budget is in good shape. We've broken ground on the new Career and Tech Center, which is very exciting. That's a project that's been in the works for a long time. And we've also progressed further down the planning stages for the East Middle School. So from capital budget, we're good. But from an operating budget perspective, I'm concerned with the enrollment declines and what that means for state contributions. So I'm reaching out to our delegates to help us see if we can hold harmless provisions put in the 2021 funding because I think that's gonna be very important moving forward. Our top priority for the last several years has been funding our negotiated agreements with our staffs. And we're proud to say that we have provided solid raises for our employees in each of the last four years. And we're gonna continue to strive to do that. It's gonna be a very tough balancing act, especially with all of those extra services and interventions that I think we're gonna need to do for our students. And we're gonna have to work very closely with our commissioners because this past year, they gave us maintenance of effort from a funding perspective and we understood that that's what they had and we made it work. But if funding persists at the maintenance of effort level, that's going to be extremely difficult for us. So we're gonna, there's gonna be some serious concerns with the school system. So we're gonna have to work closely with the commissioners and staff over the next year to find that delicate balancing act. Thank you.
Thank you. The last prepared question is question F, which is, what would you see as the new normal in education going forward? And we're gonna ask Stephanie to start with that one, please. Thank you.
Sure. Um, so the new normal in education going forward and how I see that. Again, offering virtual learning going forward for everybody who wants to take advantage of it, right? For those where virtual education would work better than being in a classroom. Doing that on a year-by-year basis, opting in, those students can come back. But if you opt in for, you know, the 2020-2021 school year, that's what you're locked into for that year. The following year, if you want to return to school, that's fine. And I'd like to see that done through the county versus through homeschool associations. That way, you know that they're getting the county curriculum, not some other curriculum. Ideally, I would love to see smaller class sizes. That would really help with being able to continue with social distancing and making sure that kids aren't getting terms on each other and sending those terms home. That's obviously not really gonna happen, at least not right away, but I would like it to be something that we look at and consider. You know, how could we accomplish that? What would that look like? The other thing I think that we're probably gonna need to see, and you see it everywhere now, not everywhere, but in a lot of places, is temperature screening. When the students get off the bus and they're walking into the school, having the school nurse or, you know, somebody from the office standing there with the, you know, thing that checks your forehead, checking everybody's temperature. Now granted, there are ways to get around that. You send your child to school with Advil in their system, they're not gonna have a fever. But that's preventative on so many levels. If your child's coming to school with a fever, it doesn't mean they have COVID. It could mean they have the flu. They could have tonsillitis. They could have a number of things. They could have strep. But I think it's still a good measure to have in place if we could possibly get that. Was that time?
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
I want to remind anyone listening, if you want to send in a question to be asked, the easiest way is to email to mail.admin@phinxburg.org or you can use the chat feature in Zoom. So continuing on with our last prepared question F, Virginia, if you. in Zoom. So continuing on with our last prepared question, F, Virginia, if you would speak next. I think you're muted, Virginia. Virginia, I can see you're speaking, but you're on mute. You'd have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Okay.
I think the new norm will be when there's a snow day, that the kids would still, still have homework and be using more of the technology that they've learned during this pandemic. And I think that we're going to see a lot of difference in the way that we teach different courses to, to reach the kids that we weren't reaching before. And I think that it, it may be a lot more adventurous in teaching our kids and keeping them ahead of what they're supposed to do. That's what I think the new norm will be, a lot more technology involved.
Okay, thank you. Donna, you would be up next.
Okay, thanks. I always think the new normal is an interesting question. You know, I'm a firm believer in traditional model for education. But with every crisis, you have to look for the silver linings, right? And where are the things that you can do better because you were forced to? Like, things that you didn't think you could do, that now you realize you actually can. And some of those things are, you know, building an instructional technology platform that, that, you know, we deliver instruction differently in the classroom, even if it is live. We use that technology in, in our lessons. We make our kids good digital citizens. They learn what that means. Snow days will be very different. Sick days may be very different for kids in the future. It may be a lot easier for kids to stay home if they have access to virtual content. I believe it absolutely will have a place, you know, the virtual model will have a place moving forward. But just as, you know, businesses learned that remote working has a place, remote teaching and remote learning also has a place. Maybe not quite so much with special ed and elementary school. But I think at the older ages, the use of technology and a strong technology platform, I think it can just build on so many new and different pathways for success for our students. And it's actually, you know, once we get past these scary times, they're actually going to be very exciting times.
Thank you. And Marsha, you would be the last on question F, please.
Okay, thank you. We will eventually return to in-person classes, but we will still need virtual. As I stated earlier, there should be no more snow days, as long as the state approves this. And high school students will be able to take classes that they need, regardless if they are in a large or small school. And I can explain that. I know two years ago, in Manchester Valley, for an example, they didn't, could not find a sign language teacher. And the student had to continue to go to school every day and drive to Carroll Community College. In this day and age, then, instead of going to finish her completer program, I was, it would have been able for her to jump in on a class virtually in another high school. And the other thing is that people don't realize that in larger enrollment schools, they can provide more classes. And then with the smaller ones, sometimes they have to alternate their AP classes, their science classes, and their math classes when they get to their junior, senior year. That way, if we do some virtual teaching with that, then we should not have that problem anymore. And they could, they can continue on with other classes that they want and would not have to wait. So I think this would be a joint use of in, in school, in class, and virtual. I know parents have really enjoyed the IEPs, not having to travel, and all meeting in, on virtual, and saves time. And same thing with meetings for, for teachers and going to state meetings. We could save some money on that travel. So we need to look at a combination. And I think we've learned a lot from this. We're still going to keep on learning more. But the new normal is going to be a combination.
Thank you. And this would be last call for any audience questions. There's a bunch of people watching, and we haven't received any questions yet. So if you do have a question, throw it in the chat quickly.
Yes, Diane. I'm one, I'm in the meeting.
We're, we'll go ahead and then move into closing remarks. I will give you a little extra time. Let me see, other one is, just wanted to say thank you. So I'll give a little extra time for closing remarks. I was going to start with Virginia on closing remarks, if you want to, hang on a second. Okay, we have one, one question. So why don't we, we'll do that one, and then go on with closing remarks. I believe everyone can see it in chat, but I'll go ahead and read it. And that is regarding the petitions from over the summer on race in the Carroll County curriculum system. What plans, if any, do you have in regards to units on Black history or literature in the social studies and English curriculum, and increasing the number of minority educators? And we'll start, well, we'll start with Virginia on that one, please. You're muted again, Virginia.
Okay. I know one of the, one of the things that they're, they're trying to do to begin with is to hire more, get more African Americans teachers in. And this is, is something new. They're trying to get more books about African Americans into the school system, and to, and they're increasing the multicultural activities. And they're trying, we're trying so many new things that I'm not, because I am not on the board, I'm not privileged to a lot of the things that they have planned. But there's going to be some exciting things, and it's coming through the equity office. And we're, we're meeting quite a bit with the teachers to make sure that they understand equity and, and how to move forward. And that's about it for me.
Okay. Donna, would you speak to that? And do you need to reread the question?
No, I think I'm good.
Um, I, one of the first things I want to point out is that in our strategic plan, we actually have a very strong equity component in our strategic plan. And that was built in very specifically to make sure that, that we had continuous improvement for all of our students, and especially some of our struggling student groups. And so that, that strong equity component, we have measures and of accountability that we put into our strategic plan. And we've been monitoring and executing on those regularly. I know that we do have several HR initiatives that are going on, both at the recruiting level, and also to provide support initiatives within the county for African American teachers. And there's also a lot going on with the Curriculum Council work right now. We have several items that are under review right now in this regard, that are with the Curriculum Council, and we should be seeing those soon. And there's, there's a lot of, a lot of really good work going on around the county, especially in a virtual setting with, you know, reading clubs and book clubs and support circles, and just really a lot of, a lot of good work going on, and really focused around that equity component. And we're continued, going to continue to focus on that as part of our strategic plan.
Thank you. And Marsha, do you have a question?
Yes. Donna and I worked very hard on our new equity policy. And in fact, we even sent it back to the committee and had them rewrite part of that, because we were not pleased with it. And I think we have a fantastic equity policy that's fair for all. Our two curriculum councils are working very hard in English and social studies. Judy Jones is phenomenal. She works very hard in her job, and she does a fantastic job at the beginning of school every year with a large activity for all people that they can come. And it's been held at Winters Mill the last several years. And it's a multicultural day for anyone that is interested. And the interest change every year. Shantris Baptist is doing a fantastic job. She has her group working very hard. When we hire these new hires, she's also included other people on her staff to try to bring other minorities along with the blacks, the Hispanics, and to, and try to balance out our inequities in our, in our system. So we are trying very, very hard. And in fact, our last thing I think we've done, Donna, we've looked at, at books that just came out, and trying to get more equity in those. So we have been really working on that this past year.
Thank you. And Stephanie, of course, the same question. Do you have a question in front of you, or need it reread?
I have it in front of me. Thank you. So I'll go back to what I said is one of the biggest challenges, challenges facing Carroll County Public Schools outside of COVID, which is diversity and inclusion. It is something that is near and dear to my heart. So I know I've been able to be in the presence of Ms. Judy Jones, who is very energetic. And I know she is working very, very hard to, you know, create, you know, a better environment for teachers of color to want to come and work in Carroll County Public Schools, and is very much appreciated. As far as the curriculum goes, one of the things that has always, in my entire life, upset me a little bit, is that we tend to only have, we only learn about Black history in Black History Month. US history is about the entire United States. And there, I should be able to learn about something that an African American did in US history outside of the month of February. I think that it needs to be more encompassing of everybody. If, if it's, you know, somebody who was Jewish, that it needs to be more encompassing. That's where the inclusion comes in, right? It's diversity and inclusion. So we want to see more people represented within our school system. And we also want to see it included in our curriculum. So I think that's something that Christopher asked, and yes, it's something that needs to be thoroughly looked at. And based on what Marsha and Donna have said, that that is currently happening, which is great news.
Thank you. We will move into closing remarks, and I'll give you a little extra time in your closing remarks. And we're going to start with Donna.
Okay. Well, first, I want to thank FPAC for, for putting this event together and bringing all the candidates together in a virtual forum. We haven't actually been able to see each other face to face out and about on the campaign trail, which is a little bit interesting situation this year. But I believe that open and transparent conversation and debate is so important today, and that voters need to make an educated choice on who they think the best qualified candidate is. And with that being said, I also believe that voters need to look at past performance. And in that, that respect, I think that's where Marsha and I really separate ourselves. Over the past two years, CCPS has been rated the number one school system in the state, and we're only going to improve from there. We have strong results, and one of our key strengths is the, our, our belief in a continuous improvement culture. And we've really been driving that home. We want to continuously make CCPS the best that it possibly can be. And while every candidate says that they support student achievement, it's critical that you have a plan with metrics and accountabilities to get there. And you can course correct and make changes along the way to make sure everybody's on the same page. And that's the best formula for success. With that being said, under, under our leadership, I think CCPS has developed and monitored a robust strategic plan. It ensures we're all on the same page, and we're going to ensure student success along the way. So on November 3, I'd like to say, please vote for me, Donna Savigny, and also my fellow board member, Marsha Herbert. We're going to continue to work together as an effective team for our students and their success. Thank you.
Michael, you're on mute.
Sorry. Thank you. It was, it was my turn to mute myself and forget. Marsha, if you would give us your closing remarks, please. Thank you.
All right. First of all, I again want to thank the FPAC for hosting this forum. I'm here to serve the students of Carroll County, along with the educators and the staff alike. I've shown through leadership and guidance, the importance of CCPS from their salaries to their test scores. CCPS is always leading the way in the state of Maryland for education. First in the state in math scores, and second in ELA. First out of the box in teaching virtually in the, in the spring. First in the state to announce reopening like no other. And the next day, the governor comes out with very similar guidelines. I am still concerned about the inequities with COVID, special education, disadvantaged students, single parents, social emotional needs, lack of time in the classroom, and no sports. And I made a little speech about that last night. Governor Hogan must have heard me, because late this afternoon, Governor Hogan and Dr. Simon announced all sports will start on, on October 7. And another piece of really good news is that we do, it was announced today, that we have a national Blue Ribbon School, Hampstead Elementary. And congratulations to Arlene Moore and her staff. That does not come around very often. And I tell you, that is a lot of hard work. I'm in the trenches every day with my granddaughters. I can see what goes on in school. I am out and about visiting schools. I'm committed to this school system with over 40 years' experience, four years on the board. But I cannot predict the future. But if it rears its ugly head again with school closings, I will not vote for that. The future is uncertain, but I will make the best decisions. But I know with my experience from teaching, coaching, being a business owner, I will give it the best I can. But the most important thing is, I would also like you to vote for my friend and colleague, Donna Savigny. We have worked so well together. We have got a lot of things accomplished with that strategic plan, making people accountable like no other. So please vote for me, Marsha Herbert, and Donna Savigny for Board of Education, and we are number three and four on the ballot. And thank you.
Thank you. And Stephanie, you'd be up next with your closing remarks, please.
Sure. So the first thing I would like to do, obviously, is thank FPAC for putting this event on tonight. Really appreciate it. I'd like to just say how proud I am of Carroll County Public Schools. So I have, I attended Carroll County Public Schools from kindergarten all the way through graduating at Westminster High School. I also graduated from the Career Technology Center, where I studied computer technology. So very proud of the school system. Would not have stayed in the county and raised children here if I didn't think it was a great school system. I want to thank the board members. So Marsha and Donna and Virginia, Virginia is a former board member. These women have put in time and effort, and they deserve credit for the things that they have done. I find you women very inspirational. That's why I'm here. I see the changes that get made. I want to be part of that change. I would love for people to vote for me, but know that if I don't make it, I still have Community Advisory Council. I'm still going to be a part of the Board of Education. I'm still going to be at the meetings. Those things are going to continue to happen. You know, for me personally, it's about creating that bond with the community, getting that feedback, and being able to bring that feedback to the correct platform to make sure that we're making informed decisions for our stakeholders. You know, and those stakeholders are our educators, our students, our parents. But it goes beyond that. It's whole communities. When you have a school and something's happening at that school, it's impacting the community around the school. And it may not be that that community necessarily has children, but there's an impact there. So making sure that we are So making sure that we are, you know, looking at this fully from end to end, including our partners, you know, one of our new partners, together we own it. Making sure that we're keeping in touch with those nonprofits that are there to actually help and serve the communities and help and serve Carroll County Public Schools. So that's something that I, I really feel passionate about right now. So thank you for allowing me to be here and to share my ideas.
Thank you. And last on the agenda, Virginia, if you would give us your closing remarks. And you will have to unmute. It's something I know about now.
We learn as we go. My name's Virginia Harrison and I was on the board for eight and a half years. And I tell you, I enjoyed being on the board. I learned so much. I knew about the school system, but I was so impressed. The whole time that I was on the board, I tried my very best to give the school system all the dignity and respect that they deserve because they were a team. We were a team. Our board members were a team. And every decision I made was first, how does it affect the kids? How does it affect the teachers? How is this going to affect our school system? Is this the best decision you to make? And the way I made my decisions was how I treat my family. Sometime you have to do something people don't like, but you have to do it because it's the best thing for the cause. I thoroughly enjoyed the work. I thoroughly, I was a big part. I was a member of May and they asked me to represent them at the, the Governor's Committee of the Maryland, the State of Maryland Humanities Mental Health Council. And I, I enjoyed that and especially when they talked so highly of Carroll County. Because in a meeting one day, they said, we have to get into our schools to help them talk about the drug problem. And I raised my hand and I said, you know what? We're doing that. We have been doing that for a while. And the lady turned to me and she says, Carroll County is always ahead of us. And I think that they deserve the best and I would give them everything I have to continue the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to, that, that does conclude the program tonight. I'd like to thank everyone who came and certainly thank the candidates. If Skip, Indiana are still available and have any remarks, that would be great as well. But you back with us, Deanna? You're muted. Yes, there you go.
No, I have no, no further questions and thank you all.
I'm, I'm still here if anybody can hear me. And I apologize first for my poor connection.
We can hear you, Skip. Thank you for getting us started.
I'd like, I'd like to thank the candidates, all four, for participating tonight.
Thanks, Skip.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing y'all.
Yes. Okay.
I couldn't get on earlier. I'm sorry about that.
No problem. It worked out.